We can share for a while, too.
Yeah.
So she's prepared to get?
I can just share.
See you there?
You already do it? Fine. Hurry it. If there's an opportunity, I'll grab it, bring it over, so you're not.
Ready? Me and you will snuggle actually.
Snuggle.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024 to order. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Got a packed house here already. First up, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We'll move to presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. First up this evening is the special event update for Leprechaun Days. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. With me tonight is David Chumley. David is on the Leprechaun Days Committee. David is going to give an update on the 2024 event that is just around the corner. But before he does that, I do just want to plug the Grill Your Aceoff BBQ event that is taking place this Saturday. It is an all-day event for the folks that are grilling. And then in the afternoon, around 1 o'clock, 1:30-ish, we start selling ribs to the public. And so we have a couple of our judges up here today. Councilmember Klimpel, Mayor Wiesensel will be sampling all of the ribs. We have 16 teams, which, 16 now, and we had to close it because we're getting to the deadline. But we're expecting to have beer sales by Omni Brewery during the afternoon, and then also have the ribs for sale. And we have trophies. And the winner of the People's Choice Award, which is the event where everyone gets to sample the ribs and then they get to vote, the residents, the people out in the crowd get to vote, they win a championship belt, which is kind of a new thing for us to get into the realm of kind of a wrestling.
A shirt big enough.
Yeah, wrestling belt, adult size. And so, but that's going to be a fun event, so come out, check our Facebook page for information. With that, I will turn it over to David.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Council and Mayor, for having us here tonight. On behalf of the Rosemount Leprechaun Days Volunteer Committee, I'd like to thank you for all of your support for this community event, as well as all of the departments of the city, Public Works, Parks and Rec, the fine police department, Fire Department that help us out through the events. We couldn't do it without all of the teamwork that goes on for this event. We're a small volunteer committee that kind of plans it all, but we really rely on a lot of the resources from the city to make this event go well. So just want to highlight a couple of things that we have going on this year. Again, it's the eight-day event starting next Saturday, kicking it off again with the Run for the Gold and the waffle and breakfast, sausage breakfast at the Fire Department. So kicking it all off Saturday with the normal things, and as Dan just mentioned, one of the new events to that day is the Grill Your Aceoff. Sounds like a lot of you are already going to be involved in that, so good luck. Make sure you bring your appetite along for that, I guess. And then just, you know, a couple of new highlights that we want to touch on. We've got some new events this year. We have, we have, starting on Tuesday night, we have a musical, Shrek the Musical, the Apple Valley. Community Theater is going to put on a play or a musical down at Central Park. Also that night, Children's Dental is going to have a petting zoo and an ice cream social and a band at their location. And then we kind of get into Midsummer Fair again, starting Thursday night. And we're kicking that off this year with a new car show. So we're doing a car show in the Legion parking lot between the Legion and Central Park. And I think there was 55-plus registered cars for that. So that's going to start at 4 o'clock on Thursday night. And then in addition to Midsummer Fair that night, a couple, the local downtown businesses are getting involved this year with the local shop hop, they're calling it. So a lot of the downtown businesses are having sales and just having an open-door event for all of their businesses to help promote their business in the community. A couple other things to highlight, we have, again, Midsummer Fair, the entertainment down there, we have Belfast Cowboys playing Thursday night, Rag Town, a country pop, pop country band on Friday. And then Saturday night, we have The Hype playing, so 80s hairband, bring your wigs, bring your... Also new up there, so we have about 30-plus local businesses, vendors, participating this year. It's more than we've ever had in the little vendor section. We kind of expanded that out. Couple new food trucks to bring along this year. We also expanded kind of the beer garden section. Well, we didn't expand it, but we're fitting more into there this year, I should say. So trying to utilize every little, you know, ounce of space we have. But Lost Ortiz is going to be there this year, and they're offering, they're going to have a margarita stand up there and selling their local wear. And then we also partnered up with our charitable gambling partner, the Hockey Association, Raha, and they'll be selling pole tabs at the event this year. So a lot of new things going on, and Saturday night, we'll finish it up with the fireworks. Now, there's one other thing I forgot. Saturday, we have a couple other events, pickleball tournament at Hope Field House, and then True Players is hosting Hard Day's Night Professional Live Wrestling that night as well. So if you want to go out there and check out some wrestling, take that championship belt out there. They're going to have some wrestling out there, so lots going on this year.
There's something for everybody in the community.
For sure, for sure.
Could you share how many volunteers collectively worked with this on for the community?
Well, not as many as we need. Can we start there?
Still needs some more.
The committee's about, there's about 20 people, 15 to 20 people that help on the committee. And then like for the actual events that we put on, the parade and Midsummer Fair, we reach out to a lot of the high, we reach out to a lot of the local community organizations, like the high school. NHS usually fulfills a lot of the volunteer slots. We have some other local businesses that are interested in providing volunteers this week, so if you're interested in helping, leprechaundays.org, plenty of volunteer opportunities out there.
And then just to, I guess, challenge everyone, if you have a neighbor or a friend that hasn't been to Leprechaun Days, or if you've been to one or two events, maybe expand it to three or four events, check out, it's a whole week of activities.
I saw these out there. There's a whole list of event schedules out there on the table if you don't have one. Double-sided loaded with the events starting Saturday.
It's a great time for our community, and it really, you know, really is that hometown feel that we've experienced for many years here and looking to continue that again. So, thank you.
Yep.
One, I'd like to make one call out to our Councilmember Heidi Fresky, who serves as Council Liaison, and all the work that she does, not on just council, but also on this and as well Haunted Trail. So just a little appreciation for that.
Absolutely. She's at all of our meetings. She helps all, she does more than...
Great appreciation there, so. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, David.
That completes item 3A, and we'll move on to 3B and 3C, the Police Officer Oath of Office.
I was sold at pole tabs and margaritas, so that's good, but don't judge me. All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have a special night for the Police Department. We have two Oaths of Offices to administer, and we'll do that first, then we're going to go into a couple of awards, recognizing our 2022 Employee of the Year, 2023 Employee of the Year for the Police Department, and then as well as Officer Paul Larson being the Minnesota Juvenile Officer of the Year. So we'll start with the Oath of Office. If I could have Officer Trevor Wagner and Officer Nick Melendres come forward, please. Stand up here. You guys can face your audience, your fans. There you go.
Yeah, we're okay.
Nick on the left, Trevor on the right. So in the spring of 2023, the Police Department was fortunate to hire Officer Trevor Wagner as badge 3569. Trevor grew up in the city of Hastings and graduated from Stillwater High School in 2009. Following high school, Trevor went on to Minnesota State University and attained a bachelor's degree in law enforcement with a minor in corrections. Putting his degree to work, he then went on to the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, where he worked for nine years. The majority of that time, he spent as a correctional deputy, but in the final six months, he was actually made a licensed deputy with Hennepin County before transitioning over here to the city of Rosemount. Trevor's an avid outdoorsman and fisherman, likes to spend time hunting and fishing in his free time. To illustrate that, he's a fishing guide for catfish on the Mississippi River, and he even helps guide turkeys for disabled veterans and disabled children with a charitable organization. Even further, and perhaps most impressively, he has a German wire-haired pointer that he taught to dock dive. And in 2022, she was ranked number one, the number-one German wire-haired pointer in all of North America. So, very impressive. More importantly, Trevor enjoys spending time with his family, who's here in the audience today. He met his wife in college, and now he has a two-year-old son named Truett, a German shepherd, and of course, the dock jumper. Officer Wagner reports that Rosemount is a perfect place to work because the community is extremely supportive. He enjoys working with all of his partners as he seeks to grow personally and professionally as a police officer. We're proud to have Trevor on our team. Was it T-bone? Is that what they call you? Yeah, something like that. I don't know why. I'm not going to ask. All right. Next up, we have Officer Nick Melendres. He does not like Nicholas, he prefers Nick. Nick was born in Liberty Hill, Texas, but moved his family to Glenwood City, or his family moved to Glenwood City, Wisconsin, where he went to Glenwood City High School and participated in wrestling and football. Eventually, Nick's family moved to Hudson, Wisconsin, where they currently reside. In 2019, while he was still in high school, Nick joined the Minnesota Army National Guard and began training as a combat medic. Currently, he is a sergeant with the Minnesota Medical Detachment, and previously was at the 34th Division Headquarters. In 2002, Nick started with the city as a community service officer, where he excelled and earned the Employee of the Year, not to get ahead of ourselves, but he'll be getting that award here shortly. And just his first year as an employee. In his free time, Nick likes to whittle. I didn't know what that was, so I Googled it. Spent time with his friends, fishing, shooting, kayaking, or just spending times outdoors in the summertime. He comes from a strong family and mentions that his father, his mother, and his grandmother have been very supportive of his career. Finally, Nick writes that he likes the family feel of the department, the atmosphere, and how easy it is to get along with the other officers. He appreciates a supportive community. He mentioned the council, the city administrator, and extended city staff specifically. In his time here, as it helps, as he helps people through their best and worst moments, he wants to focus on building relationships with these individuals and leave them with positive impressions of the police. So welcome aboard, Nick. All right, and I think what we're going to do here is we'll have the, Aaron, if you do the Oath of Office for both of you, and then we'll do the pinning of the badge. Very good. And I should mention, they're not welcome aboard. They've been onboard for over a year now, so they're past their probationary period and doing just fine. So Nick, who's pinning on your badge tonight? All right, Trevor? All right, come on up and... All right, you guys can have a seat. I mean, Nick, you're going to be coming right back up here, so maybe you want to stand there. All right, we're going to move on to some, recognizing some notable achievements from our staff, specifically, as I mentioned before, the 2022 Employee of the Year for the Police Department, and then the 2023 Employee of the Year for the Police Department. So first of all, if I could have Officer Nick Melendres come back up here. Now officer, no longer, at this time, he was a CSO. So CSO Nick Melendres began employment at the city of Rosemount in February of 2022. While the department was authorized for two CSOs, CSO Melendres was the department's only CSO throughout the entire year. We quickly realized that he had the work ethic, dedication, intelligence, and initiative to do far more than his share for the department and community. Supervisors noted that Nick would proactively seek additional assignments from them on a daily basis, and if his name was attached to that assignment, it would be done thoroughly and in a timely manner. He was specifically noted for his reports. They were detail-oriented, organized, and reflected that they came from someone with a far, a far longer tenure. Nick made himself available to assist at various community events throughout the city. He acted as a role model at several department, or a role player, excuse me, at several department trainings, and he was willing to be flexible even at the expense of his own personal time. If that wasn't enough, Nick also trained in a reserve police officer to fill in for him when he wasn't able to work as a CSO. Throughout the year, Nick maintained nearly 30 hours of work a week while attending college full-time and also serving in the military. And, you know, besides whittling, there's a reason I have this, I have this puppy dog up here. So I'm going to challenge, Nick has many skills, magic tricks, and what else does he do?
Magic man?
Magic man, yes. So here, we have two attempts for you, if you'd like to... What are you going to be doing today?
I'm going to make another dog.
Another dog, great. We have several children in the audience that would like one, so. I walked into the squad room this morning, I'm like, what are these? They're like, oh, that's Nick. I'm like, okay, that's coming up front, yeah. Do you want to, do you want to talk about the technique as you do this, or do you have to focus? I'm not sure if this has ever been done in the history of a police swearing-in, but this is...
Is this a form of hazing, chief? Is this?
No, no, this is, yeah. Pure recognition, pure recognition.
Okay, this is pure recognition, all right, good. This is what put him over the top for 2022.
Are you incorporating this in your new officer training?
Yes, this is in the FTO manual, week one, yep. If you can't make the puppy dog, you're not going to make it. There we go. Let's give him a round of applause. Carson, do you have the? All right, they're getting rowdy. Perfect. Next, if I could have Reserve Officer Marty Smith come forward. All right, Marty, thanks for coming, man. Reserve Officer Marty Smith started as a volunteer reserve officer with the department in 2021. Prior to joining our department, Marty worked for the Lone Tree Police Department in Colorado for 10 years as a volunteer. Incredibly, in 2023 alone, talk about volunteering, Marty volunteered 600 hours of service to the Police Department. Multiple supervisors nominated Marty for this award, and it was a unanimous decision. In his nominations, it was noted that Marty would monitor the schedule to intentionally come in when the department was short of CSO. This allowed Marty to become a constant for staff when they needed his assistance with lockouts, premise checks, prisoner transports, toes, animal calls, and any other helpful duties that he could provide. Marty has represented the Police Department and volunteered with many charitable organizations such as the Heart Foundation, his grocery bag for Heroes and Helpers, worked at football games, parades, traffic details, and again, wherever we need him. He's typically in for his shifts at 06:00, starting promptly, and when he's here, he is smiling, positive, and very appreciated by staff. I consider Marty a role model for the staff and an excellent resource for the Rosemount community, so, congrats, Marty. The one, the one-man party, Marty. All right, thank you, sir. You're going, yeah, step to the mic.
I don't need a mic, I'll use my tractor.
All right, very good, very good.
I can't hang balloon animals, I can't juggle. But I do want to say a few thank yous, first to my wonderful, wild parents who supported me all these years in Lone Tree in here. And also to the chief, to the deputy chief, to all the officers and the sergeants and the CSOs. Nick, thank you very much for helping me on. And the office staff, there's no doubt in my mind, and we work in two places, that Rosemount is by far the best. I'm telling these guys, every single one of them, every day, make a very supportive environment that is positive and helps all of us to serve, not just me, all of us, be able to perform our duties and do them right. It is an absolute pleasure to come into work every day, and I hope I get to do it for a lot longer than what it's been so far, so.
Amen. Marty for chief, you should do the next one, that was good. All right. Next up, we'd like to have Officer Paul Larson, who's our School Resource Officer, come forward. As most people know, Paul was selected as the only individual in the state to be the Juvenile Officer Association Officer of the Year. So there's one of those giving out a year, it's a smiley baby. And we're very proud of Paul. So what I want to do is read a little bit of his nomination here. He's already received his official award up in Duluth at the annual conference. He's been recognized at the district board meeting, he's been recognized probably at the school, so I think he's, I think he's getting sick of the recognition, so. But this is the most important one, so. All right. Officer Paul Larson started Rosemount High School as the SRO in the fall of 2021. It did not take long for my inbox to start flooding with compliments. From the beginning, Officer Larson set the tone with a high standard of service to the school community, and he has maintained the standard of excellence throughout his entire tenure. Paul is someone who leads each day with optimism, compassion, a strong work ethic, and a genuine desire to help those he's encounters, no matter their rank, title, or social status. These attributes have helped him create relationships at all levels of the school community, and these positive relationships have been the primary catalyst for his success and ability to be influential. And that's enough of the nomination I'm going to read, because I'm going to move to these letters of recommendation that were submitted on his behalf. And in all the years that I've been part of some of these awards, I haven't seen letters as impressive as this, and I think that speaks volumes to what Paul's doing. This came in from a system principal. Quote, "You've done such an amazing job as our SRO. We really appreciate your thoughtfulness and solutions-based approach to the myriad of situations that is handled on a daily basis. In particular, I am grateful for the extra time, patience, and understanding that you extend to our marginalized students and individuals with fewer social assets. For this subset of our student community, school and related social elements can be very overwhelming, and you help them successfully navigate through these difficult matters." And another one, "I would like to acknowledge our SRO, Paul Larson, who has done an amazing job supporting a safe and secure environment at RHS and building positive relationships with students, staff, and parents. He's incredibly visible, engaged, and proactive in everything he does." Move on to another one. "As our SRO, it's not surprising that he deals with a number of situations, including thefts, fights, assaults, vehicle crashes, harassment, investigations, threats to the building, and so forth. However, there is so much more. Indeed, daily, he serves as a mentor, encourager, educator, presenter, mitigator, trainer, resource, preventer, responder, and collaborator. In fact, I can't think, and this is impressive, I can't think of anyone that has more of a positive impact or contributes greater to the Rosemount High School's positive climate and ecology than he does." Next one, came in from a student, I'll grab two more here. "Mr. Larson is a, is the police officer that make kids want to be police officers. He really knows how to brighten a kid's day, and he's very good at keeping people safe. No matter where he is, everyone knows him as Officer Larson. Outside of school, he just wears streetwear when he's with his kids, and a lot of the people still look up to him. He really goes beyond his expectations and his duties. He really is fully dedicated to protecting the school and the community with everything he has, which is why I love him as our School Resource Officer." And lastly, from another student, "I'm currently a junior at Rosemount High School, but during my sophomore year, I struggled as a teen and as a student. One of my friends then introduced me to Officer Larson later in the year, and we started eating lunch with him in his office. Lunchtime was always a highlight of my day, being able to sit there with him and two of my other friends and just talk about our lives, and he would sit there and listen for the full 25 minutes of lunch. Currently, to this day, we still sit in the office every now and then with my two friends and just debrief. I feel like having someone like Paul in your school environment can help anyone feel comfortable and welcome. I just wanted to say thank you, Officer Paul, for being someone that allows us students to share our lives with without feeling ashamed or discouraged about ourselves." So, congrats, Paul.
Thank you.
So we'll take a few minutes to roll out of here. We are going to head over to the Steeple Center. We've got, yeah, keep going around shaking the hands. We've got some ice cream and cake over at the Steeple Center for the families and friends that are here to enjoy, so please join us over there. All right, thank you.
One of these days, we're going to come to this cake party. Never get to go to the cake party.
As our, as our room is transitioning here, just to call out to anyone in our community, feel free to walk up to any of our police officers. Take the time, introduce yourself, and have a, have a talk or chat with them. Again, Leprechaun Days presents a great opportunity for you to, to have those discussions, our police officers, CSOs, they'll be out and about. And with that, that'll be completing items 3, B, C, and D, and we'll move on to item 4, response to public comment. This evening, we've got a couple of responses that we'd like to follow up on. One, we had a resident come before us last meeting, and I'll turn it over to Administrator Martin to discuss how, what we found out, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Yeah, just wanted to assure any folks watching and being aware of what, we had a presentation from a concerned resident last week. Just wanted to assure folks that we are very familiar with the resident, have been helping her get any sort of assistance that she may need for quite a number of months now. And so Police Department has just assured us that that relationship continues, and she is connected with any services that she needs from a county and state level. So happy to report that. and state level, so happy to report that.
Great. And then the second one, council's received over a variety of inquiries over some time, and we thought we'd just give a little bit of an update. I know it's a concern of people, over by the Speedway on 145th Street, that's not actually operating. Who am I looking to there?
Anyone can take a crack at that.
Mr. Keenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, definitely receive a lot of comments, and staff, staff does as well, so certainly able to provide a bit of a response on that. So the Speedway over on 145th, most people are familiar with, has been kind of meandering through an unfortunately long foreclosure process with the owners on that. So a couple of key points on an update and some timing on, on the solution there. So it's undergone environmental review, which has been a part of the process, being a former gas station, you know, they have the types of gas that they sell. It needs to go through an environmental remediation process before it can move forward on certain other types of foreclosure proceedings. One of the activities that took place actually over a year ago is that the city required them to remove the tanks that had been in place. We were able to enforce that and remove that. It's not highly visible, but these actions are taking place, although unfortunately extremely slowly. So that environmental review was completed back in March, and then the matter was able to return to the foreclosure process. There's actually a hearing to confirm the sheriff sale, again, that's part of the foreclosure process back on June 17th of this year, which then kicks off another six-month redemption period, once that sale is entered, and then that puts it to around December 17th, depending on the courts and the order. So it's, again, it's been so unfortunately long, we're very aware of it. The city has been maintaining the grass out there to what we're able to do under our legal authority, it is private property. We do have a nuisance abatement ordinance in place that does allow us to mow the grass and then invoice the ownership for that. Doesn't help a ton, but it's a little bit at least. So just kind of ask people to continue to be patient as that process plays out with the landowner, the building owner there, and feel free to reach out to us with any questions, we'll try to provide regular updates as much as possible. We do provide regular updates to the Port Authority, which is the group that meets right before city council throughout the month. Check out the packets there or reach out to staff or city council members, we're always happy to provide updates that we can.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, that completes item four. We'll move to item five, public comment. Anyone wishing to come before council to speak on an issue or question may do so at this time. That's not on the agenda. Please come forward to the podium, state your name and address and your question or comment. The podium is open.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Christopher Horton, my address is 14385 Blaine Avenue. I live and I'm the pastor of, live at and I'm the pastor of St. John's Lutheran Church of Rich Valley, right at the corner of Blaine Avenue and Highway 42, and I wish to address the council, not on a member, not on a matter on the agenda, but on a happy, a happy matter. The Lord blesses us through the hands of our neighbors, and it's good to acknowledge that and then acknowledge the neighbors themselves, how this, how that comes about, and so that's, that's my intent, is to express our appreciation from our congregation and myself for consideration and communication that went extraordinarily well recently regarding the water main project out there. It is, it's a big project with a lot of moving parts, and it's, it impacts our congregation out there right at the corner, especially because we had a funeral last Wednesday. And ordinarily, it is difficult to have a solemn cer-, excuse me, ceremony with just the traffic noise itself, and I looked out there and thought this is just not gonna go well at all. But I remembered that Nick Egger thankfully had given us prior communication of this letter that said, hey, we're doing this project, and here's communication, contact information for people. And so I reached out to, I reached out to Tyler Haranzin, who put me in touch with Patrick Klein at GM Construction, and they were fantastic in getting back to me and communicating well. I just simply asked if there was any way at all that we could be quiet out there, if they could take a long lunch break while we're at the graveside. I'm honestly expecting that this is, that's a big ask. I mean, they're busy, they got a lot of moving parts, a lot of people out there, and I'm expecting that it's, it's a long shot. They were terrific, they communicated back and forth with me. Actually told me their project intended to be done with it in time, they intended to be done on Tuesday, the funeral was on Wednesday. Wednesday morning, I'm looking out there and there's still equipment and moving dirt. So I called one more time and I said, hey, is it at least possible, can we, can we get a long lunch break or something? He said, nope, pretty sure we're gonna, gonna get it cleared up. And they did. Not only did they not have it still going, they had had their equipment moved out of there even by then, so. I wanted to, I wanted to publicly acknowledge, I appreciate very much the communication from city staff, Nick Egger, in the letter in the first place. I had also called the city and left a general voicemail in the, in the Public Works Department mailbox. Somebody took the ball and ran with it and actually contacted, put me in contact with the Mortenson people also out there. So all in all, GM, GM Construction, Short Elliott Hendrickson, Matt Steely with Short Elliott Hendrickson, and the Mortenson Construction people were absolutely phenomenal in just accommodating us, so we were able to, to carry out that service for the family out there. So I wanted to acknowledge that publicly, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's great to hear, and it's nice to know and staff when it works, right? It was a good job, and I appreciate that. We'll share that with the contractors as well. Anyone else wishing to come before council? We'll take those kind of compliments all night long. Seeing no one, we'll close the public comments, and we'll move on to, on to the consent agenda of items six, A through M. They include bill listings, minutes of the regular work session for council, temporary street closures related to Leprechaun Day's service agreement for the, our Halloween event, appointments of additional election judges for our 2024 elections, request by Maplewood Development, approval of Amberfield's 19 final plat, approval of pre-application escrow agreement with Independent School District 196 regarding the Rosemont High School additions, request by My Credit Union for approval of a COP and minor amendment to the PUD, a resolution, parking restrictions on Akron Avenue, Abbey Field Avenue, and 148th Street due to construction, purchase of the 2024 Tahoe for the fire department, the lifetime project change order number eight, and charitable gaming premises permit for the Rosemont Area Hockey Association Raha at Tops Pizza. Would any council member wish to pull any of those for further discussion? Would like anyone move the consent agenda in its entirety for approval?
So moved.
A second.
I have a motion by Tyson, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Climpel?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
And our consent agenda six is completed, 4-0. We'll move to public hearings. First this evening is the Aspen Avenue Extension Project Assessment Hearing and Adoption of Assessment. Roll, Mr. Egger.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight you have before you consideration of a resolution to adopt the special assessments that are coupled to the Aspen Avenue Extension Project, which we began work on very recently here earlier in July. I'll just walk through that briefly again and give some highlights of how the assessment process works. Just to recap, where we are talking about, this is a road that connects Conamara Trail with County Road 42. It straddles the Lifetime Development Site down the west, and a couple of properties on the east, including a parcel that DCTC owns, as well as another privately owned parcel you can see in the small square there, abutting County Road 42. Project's pretty standard, brand-new street, utilities beneath it to serve the adjacent properties and provide some redundancy in our systems, as well as a future trail, or a trail segment that will connect to forthcoming trails that are being built by Dakota County, and then pieces that are in and through the Lifetime Site. Here's another look at that, a little more detail as it relates to the Lifetime Project layout. We had some very good bid results on this project. The originally estimated cost was about $962,000 at our feasibility report stage, but after a competitive bid process, we did receive 12 bids on this. The updated project total, projected total cost on this, again, after construction is over with, is $761,000. And that includes the overhead costs in addition to the contract for the construction items. So for instance, the design, the engineering, the inspection services, the things that bring a project to completion. From a funding standpoint, the upfront funding for a project like this is provided by the city through a variety of funds, essentially our street capital improvement fund, the sanitary sewer, water, and storm sewer funds also contribute for those utilities, but then on the back end, the special assessments that are there for your consideration tonight repay that, that outlay of city funds. So we have five properties that are impacted by the proposed assessments, they're highlighted in the map to the left in that image there, they include the Lifetime Club Site, which is owned by the Rosemont Port Authority, a private parcel that's owned by Lifetime Development Company to the south, that, those are both on the west side of the future road, and then three parcels on the east side, led by Dakota County Technical College, I mentioned that earlier. Monarch Properties owns the small square parcel in the southwesterly corner there of that square, and then the city actually owns a parcel at the very northern end of the project. The assessment amount for each property is based, you take the total project cost and then the total front footage that's alongside this road, and it's apportioned in a way that corresponds to the amount of front footage that each property has that abuts the road corridor. So they, the amounts do vary, it's a little different than what we have in a neighborhood reconstruction project where there's a set amount for a type of property throughout. This one is essentially a new development type of road, so 100% of the costs are assessed back to the abutting properties. Just to highlight the range on that, we have, that goes from about $100,000 up to $202,000. So once the assessments would be adopted by the council, they are certified to the county tax rules later in this year, and then that begins a up-to-10-year repayment installment process for each property to pay their portion of the assessments, and that would come with a 5% interest rate on this particular project. Schedule-wise, like I said, we began work on this in the last couple of weeks. At this moment, really, all that's been accomplished is tree removal and some light grating and the start of some erosion and sediment control items out there. It'll ramp up in the coming weeks. And as touched on in public comment, we also have this major trunk water main project running through the corridor on County Road 42 there, that's been going on a couple of months now, and there is a facility that's right in the pathway of the southern end of the road. You can see that in the image in the background here where that truck is parked, it's actually a pressure reduction valve station that we have to remove, and we'll have to relocate that facility elsewhere. That work is taking place with the trunk water main project, but the process of taking that out of there will actually be pretty hot and heavy at the end of this week, and then that'll clear the way for the Aspen Avenue contractor to do the things they need to do right in that same space. So tonight's actions, again, just to recap, council is asked to hold a public hearing to receive comment about the assessments related to the project. Again, if there were to be a party, one of the property owners would want to object or have reservation with it, they are required to submit the intent to protest or object to the assessment in writing to the council ahead of the public hearing action. The public hearing takes place, and then staff's recommendation is that council adopts the resolution to approve the assessments. So that's all I have. I can turn it back to you, Mayor, for any questions and the public hearing.
All right, we'll open it up to council, any questions for staff?
No.
Seeing none at this time, then we'll go ahead and we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic may do so by coming forward to the podium, state your name and address and your comment or question. Seeing no one making a mad dash towards the podium. Anyone? Seeing no one at this time, we'll move the, to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed. Any other questions or comments? Follow-up? All right, looking for a motion to move the recommended action.
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the assessment role for the Aspen Avenue Extension Project, City Project 2024-02.
Your second?
Second.
Motion by Climpel, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
And that completes seven A, 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is no unfinished business that completes item eight, and then we have new business, item number nine. We have an appeal by Keith Mockwin of the, regarding the Planning Commission's denial acting as the Board of Appeals and adjustments of a variance to construct in addition to an existing accessory structure exceeding the maximum area allowable by the zoning ordinance. Mr. Nemchek.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is an appeal to a denial made by the Planning Commission acting as the Board of Appeals and adjustments at its meeting on May 28th. Quick summary, the applicant applied for a variance to construct in addition to an existing accessory structure. That would bring the aggregate total for accessory structures above the 1,000-square-foot limit within the R1 zoning district. There's an existing garage on the site of 268 square feet. The applicant is proposing 292-square-foot addition to that. In addition to the detached garage on the site, there is a small, two small, approximately 120-square-foot accessory buildings, a shed, as well as another building in the northwest corner of the, of the site, and a small 105-square-foot addition at the rear of that existing detached garage. So with that proposed addition and no removal of any of the existing accessory structures, the total aggregate square footage for accessory buildings would be 1,905 square feet. If there were the removal of those two small accessory structures, the carport and the addition on the back of the garage, that total would be 1,560 square feet. The site is located in the Hawkins Pond neighborhood of the city, kind of in the western area. East of the site is Shannon Parkway, a little south is 145th Street West, and then to the west is Diamond Path, which is also the western boundary or western city limits. The home on the site was constructed in 1966. The parcel itself was platted in 2005, when there were two additional parcels just east of the site created, breaking up the larger original homestead for the Hawkins Pond area. You can see from this aerial the principal structure on the site, there's a shared driveway entering from the east of the site, one of the smaller accessory structures on the west that has been there for quite some time, as well as a newer accessory structure kind of hidden here in the hills. This is a carport that was constructed by the applicant, as well as the small addition at the rear of the existing detached garage. Also would note that the western portion of the house was at one time a single-stall garage that was converted to livable area following the reconfiguration of the driveway. I've got a couple pictures here to explain that a little bit clearer, but this oblique aerial gives you an idea of how that, the original homestead for the area was sited with the two new properties that were approved in 2005. So here's the home as it sits today. As I said, the area to the west was once a single-stall garage that was converted to living space. If you look at this If you look at this 2002 aerial, prior to the subdivision of the property here, you can see the driveway came in and it was at a different grade that allowed for usage of this as a garage. With the road being reconfigured, it did create a steeper grade, and staff assumes that that was the reason why the, the attached garage was no longer usable. The plans for the proposed additions submitted by the applicant show the 292-square-foot addition on the west side of the existing two-car garage. It's a little bit taller, within the maximum building height of the R1 zoning district for accessory structures, and the plans do show a slight bump out to the rear. The existing garage is at the, is the closest it can be to the rear property line. The proposed extension to the back would be encroaching on the rear yard setback. Also note that the, the small addition the applicant had constructed on the back of the garage also encroaches in that setback there, it's not shown on this plan here. In order to make a finding, to make findings to grant a variant, or in order to approve a variance, several findings must be made. Staff and the Planning Commission were able to make four of the five. The, the variance request is in harmony with the purpose and intent. The detached garage is smaller than the footprint of the house. It's, it's reasonable and expected to have a detached garage where, where, where able, and then, again, the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The site is guided for single-family homes, the applicant is not planning on changing that. And then, the applicant, again, is, is proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner. Staff does not find that there are unique circumstances that would create practical difficulties. The applicant does have an opportunity to construct an attached garage that would give them the additional garage space that they're looking for through the addition. Staff did meet with the applicant, they did share information related to the interior configuration of the property of the home that would not lend itself to the construction of an accessory, or of an attached garage, as well as the existence of a large heritage or significant, significant tree that is really in the only spot that an attached garage could be constructed, given the grade of the site. The last finding, the, the proposed variance and proposed project would not alter the essential character of the locality. So, that being said, there's a, some additional comments here. The applicant, as I said, acknowledged that there would be practical difficulties related to the existing interior layout. There's topography issues on the site, there's grading that would have to be done if there was going to be an attached garage, and that tree that I mentioned in the rear east side of the house. Through conversations that staff has had with the applicant and their attorney, there's a, a willingness to remove the existing accessory structures to, to allow the proposed variance to be closer to the standards of the code, and then also updating the plan so that the rear of the addition does not encroach into that rear yard setback. Just note that variances may be granted when an applicant establishes that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance, and that economic considerations, while, may be considered, economic considerations alone don't constitute practical difficulties. Also, through conversations with the applicant and their attorney, they let us know that there is a conservation easement that was placed on the western portion of the property, as well as some tree preservation language within the original approvals that would reflect a desire to maintain the character of the parcel itself, the wooded feel, as well as the existing retaining walls, or existing trees which are shown where retaining walls were placed around their bases. Would note that the northern tree, I believe, succumbed to the Emerald Ash Borer, that is no longer there. And then also note that there is, one of the existing accessory buildings is located within that conservation easement as well. Just a really rough measurement here showing where that conservation easement lies on the property, in the northwest corner. It does extend further south, but looking here at the, the kind of subject portion of the parcel, you can see that existing accessory building within that conservation easement, but the proposed addition would fall outside of that area. So, as I said, staff and the city attorney met with the applicant's attorney to discuss this issue. There was some, some agreement that if approved, following conditions would be acceptable to both the city and the applicant, namely, the accessory structures, including the carport would be removed to allow the existing, to, and including the existing addition to the garage. The plan would be updated to align the rear of the proposed addition with the existing garage. And then, just also a note that the, the staff would recommend that, a condition that the proposed addition doesn't encroach upon the conservation easement be included as well. So, staff is not asking for a clear action tonight as far as a approval or denial, but more to have a discussion, let staff know where the council is leaning on this so that we can draft a resolution that would be adopted by council at its next meeting on August 5th, that would be reflective of the discussions had tonight. So, the only action staff is recommending would be a motion to continue the hearing to that August 5th meeting, at which time the council could adopt a resolution of approval or deny, approval with conditions or denial. I can answer any questions, I know the applicant and their attorney are present too, and can certainly speak to this request as well.
We'll open up the floor to council, questions, comments? Anyone?
Yeah, you know, I had some of the same concerns, but it sounds like the applicant has been working with the city on kind of remediating a lot of those, so I don't have any additional questions, but appreciate that, the time put into that work.
Thank you, thank you.
My only question is, and I think this kind of came up in the, because I watched the planning video in the, the commission meeting, there's no intent for this new garage to be a, a business of any sort, right?
That's my understanding, based on conversations with the applicant and their attorney, it's simply for personal use, storage of their own vehicles and things like that.
Right, okay.
Anything else?
Oh, I'm fine, as such, yes.
Then we'll open up a public hearing if the applicant or representative wants to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and city staff and city attorney. My name's Megan Rogers, I'm attorney with Larkin Hoffman, and I represent the Moquon family. I appreciate the time that, that staff has dedicated to additional conversations following the Planning Commission and working through to, to hopefully come to a resolution here. So, I submitted a letter for your review outlining some of the specific practical difficulties that we see on this site. And I will, the city staff has always did an excellent job of walking through those things that the Planning Commission was able to find, and they were able to make four of the five findings that are required by your code. The, the last finding to be made is the one regarding uniqueness, and, and I'll speak with you a little bit more this evening about that finding. But I wanted to also take an opportunity to talk a little bit about the, the nature of a variance and why we are seeking it and why we believe it's appropriate in this case. So, I, I, I went to the League of Minnesota City's website, and I took a look at how they, they term variances, and it says, "A variance is a way that cities may allow for an exception to a part of a zoning ordinance. It's a permitted departure from the strict enforcement of the ordinance as applied to a particular piece of property." And, and I wanted to, to talk about this idea of a permitted departure as well as the particular piece of property, because there was quite a bit of conversation at the Planning Commission, which I went back and watched, about the concern that, you know, approving something like our request for this variance would create a precedent for impacting variance approvals for other properties within the city. And, and that very much is just not the case, it's diving right down to the particular nature of this property and how it is different from other properties and why this is appropriate in this case. And then, and also, you know, what the League of Minnesota City says about this is, "While past practice may be instructive in reviewing variances, it cannot replace the need for analysis of all three of the practical difficulties factors for each and every variance request. In evaluating a variance request, cities are not bound by decisions made for prior variance requests." And then, and then second, and then lastly, you know, I think that there was quite a bit of conversation in, in the Planning Commission meeting, as well as in the staff report, about the, the economic considerations here. And Minnesota law is clear, economic considerations cannot be the sole determinant for a variance approval. But economic considerations, and this was made clear by the Supreme Court in 2022 in another case, very, sort of similar to this one, they said, "A variance cannot be motive, motivated exclusively by economic considerations, but the economic considerations may be considered along with other factors." And, and I'll ask you to keep that in mind as we talk a little bit about the uniqueness of this property, because when we look at the alternatives to constructing this addition, that's where we come very limited, and I think it's also reasonable for, for us to talk just about what the practical realities and how does that look, how does it interact with the home, what would it cost, would it exceed the value of the home itself, and, and what type of value would it add to the overall tax base of the site? So, staff kindly went through the reasons, in particular, on the east side and the west side of the property, why a variance would meet the uniqueness standards. So, on the east side of the property, we have a shared drive that you can see there. The, the home itself is set back 11 feet, six inches from the side yard setback, your side yard setback within this district is 10 feet. And so, on the east side of the property, not only would you run into sightline conditions in terms of redoing the driveway there, but you would also need a variance from the side yard setback. So, that side doesn't work. On the west side of the property, where the existing driveway exists today, you know, what we considered was, is there an opportunity to do sort of a drive-through garage, where you could have a number of cars that drive through that space, move to the, the back of the exterior building, you'd put the garage up there, and how would that work? And one of the things that we shared in our submission to you all for review was an, an image showing the, the grade of the site in that area. And we ran this through the Minnesota DNR standards, their topographical map, topographical maps, excuse me, as well as just the images on Google, and it's about, and, and our property owner, of course, measured these as well. So, it's about a four-and-a-half-foot grade difference from the driveway up to the home. And if we do some rough calculations in terms of adding a thousand-square-foot garage there, that's about 15 tow trucks, 15 trucks full of fill that would be needed to, to, to level out that area, to make it buildable, and to make it connect into the driveway into the home. And to attach it, right, because that's the big thing that we have at need in this case, it needs to be attached to the home in order to exceed that existing garage area. And, and the other real significant issue that we looked at in reviewing those maps is that the way water is graded on the site today, is it runs off of the side of the home, it runs down that sort of four-foot slope, and there's a dip in the driveway. So, that dip in the driveway carries it down to the street, and that allows for that, that water to, to sort of run off that higher slope and back down to the road. There is about a 25, 30-foot grade change between where the house sits and the road itself, and, and runs down the slope. Now, if you raise that, that western side yard to be able to accommodate a garage, the risk here, of course, is that the water now is pushed down into the neighbor's backyard, and there is a significant lower-level slope than our property owner here. And so, that's why we concluded that a property cannot be, a garage cannot be properly attached to, immediately to the west side of the home. And what staff suggested in the Planning Commission meeting and in our conversations with them is, you know, why can't this area on the east side of the home, where you see that large tree in the aerial here, why can't that be utilized to attach a garage? Why can't you just, to draw it right out from that area, it would meet the side yard setbacks, it's fairly flat back there? So, there's two standards that I'm going to suggest to you here tonight. Number one, the first one I'd like to talk about is just the practical implications of that. So, the backside of the home, that's where all the electrical connections are, it's where the HVAC system is, there are two windows that go down to the basement of the home that would then be, would need to be filled in, covered up, structural changes would need to be made. Those are also bedrooms in the back of the home, and so, the home would likely lose a bedroom as part of the construction of an attached garage, or would have to be significantly reconfigured on the interior. Minnesota case law is clear that orientation of a structure is not one of the, the, the matters that can be held against a property owner in terms of considering a variance, and so, it's appropriate for you to consider the orientation of the structure as it exists today and as it was approved in 2005. So, those are the sort of practical impacts of why it would be difficult to do so, to, to add a garage in that space. But secondarily, and, and this is something that Mr. Moquon and I had an opportunity to talk over the weekend, and he recalled that when he bought the home, the property owner said, "Oh, there's significant tree preservation issues on the site." And so, we went and we pulled the title records for the property, and that's what staff showed you here. I just make myself at home here. What, what staff showed you here, this is an addendum and a site plan that has been recorded against the property, and it's been recorded against the property two different ways. Number one, it was recorded against the property as part of a declaration of covenants and restrictions that, that we provided to, to staff and the city attorney yesterday. So, that declaration of covenants, so a couple of things in there. First and foremost, it, it has something, it has a statement that I think is important for our conversation this evening, and that's one of the whereas clauses. It says, "The city has approved such development on the basis of the determination by the city council of the city that such development is acceptable only by reason of the details of the development proposed and the unique land, land use characteristics of the proposed use of the subject property. And that but for the details of the development proposed and the unique land characteristics of such proposed use," talking about this very property, we're talking about uniqueness here tonight, "the plan you had developed would not have been approved." So, so the city council in 2005 found this to be a unique property subject to additional requirements and, and requesting specific conditions of approval. One of those conditions of approval is the, is the limitation and development of the property subject to the tree preservation plan, and that's what's here up before you this, this evening as well, that you can see here. Importantly, and this is why I'm getting, I'm getting to the point, we did lose the, the far rear yard tree that's shown by the existing retaining wall next to the existing garage to Emerald Ash Borer, but the tree that is right up against the home is a heritage tree as defined by your code, and it also is designed to be preserved by the former approvals. And it is, and it's about four and a half, four feet plus around, and it provides shade, significant and extensive shade to the existing home, also to the other home on the, in this Lot 2 area here, so it extends broadly across the property. And we would very much suggest that, that these prior approvals are, are exactly the type of unique characteristic and the desire to preserve that particular tree that, that make constructing a garage back there that would require the removal of that tree to be exactly the type of finding we would seek for you to make as part of your consideration this evening. And, and so, with that in mind, you know, those are the, those are the impacts that, that we really see as being unique here. They, the, the declaration mandates of the property may only be developed and used in accordance with the rules of the declaration, including that tree preservation and access to the property. And but for, for the, the grade of the property, the existing building setbacks, the orientation, the areas protected by the tree preservation ordinance, and those 2005 approvals, Mr. Moquon would have every right, right to construct a garage up to 1,500 square feet. And so, for there to be an attached garage here, major grading, complete redesign of the home, there would be, you know, loss of bedrooms, destruction of protected trees, violation of the existing approvals, and, and these very much are the types of conditions that Minnesota courts have considered as creating a practical difficulty supported by Minnesota law. And we are absolutely happy to answer any questions that you may have. Of course, the property owner is here and can provide more specifics, and I'm happy to answer as well. I do have copies of the declaration if that would be helpful for anyone.
Open it up to council, any questions or comments? Earlier, staff had presented three conditions, was, are you and your client open to those three conditions? My understanding is you negotiated these?
Yes, we, we, no, we certainly are open to these conditions, and, you know, I think also just with full disclosure, the plans that we brought in were initial plans that Mr. Moquon got from a contractor. We're happy to talk about what those look like, happy to, to sort of work with staff to come to a resolution to, to make this site work. This seems to be the best place to put the garage, and there are unique factors why it would be, it would, it... it would be, it would, it should be there and won't open up the city to additional liability, although, of course, I will leave it to your city attorney to opine on that.
With that, I just want to call out that we did receive some additional communications, some additional information that was not available to the Board of Appeals and Adjustments. And so based on that, I'm looking to counsel here. We are set up to, the motion, we will continue the hearing on the appeal. What I'm looking for is either a for, a finding for, or a finding against the variance. So as a, are we kind of doing a thumbs up or a thumbs down here for, okay with the variance?
I thought the motion is to continue the appeal.
The motion will be to continue, but we have to give direction to staff. So this direction to staff is either for or against the?
I am, I am good with the variance, with them meeting those three conditions that I think have been negotiated.
I'm also good with it, too.
Yeah, same. I like the three conditions, and I do feel like the additional information that did come forward made a little bit more, more of that uniqueness case that maybe was not there at the Board of Appeals and Adjustments, so I would be leaning towards it as well.
Right.
All right, so we'll go in.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Mayor and counsel, if each of you could maybe articulate just reasons why, focusing on the factor of the uniqueness of the property, it sounds to me like there's some consensus that you are in agreement with that, but in order for staff to bring back a resolution would be helpful to say one way or the other, whether you agree with the applicant's reasons for uniqueness, or if there are other factors that the council is taking into account.
So I thought, I thought Tammy did a good job of kind of saying, essentially what we're seeing now is we have more information now than the planning commission had at the time, and the collaboration and cooperation that you've had with staff, meeting the requirements that we're looking for, and finding out that the uniqueness of trying to, at any point to try to put an attachment onto this, either takes away bedrooms, takes away, you know, heritage trees, takes away the contour of the elevation, all of that new information tells us that you're trying to meet every possible option that is truly there, and that truly the best fit, meeting the requirements that staff has kind of laid out, that you're really kind of doing your best to find out what's best for the homeowner and for the city, meeting our variance requirements.
Yeah.
I think with regards to some of the specifics, the idea that there's a heritage tree, that that's a part of whatever it was, the deed or part of that, certainly the conservation easement, and I think having that there also supports the removal conditions of some of the structures. The existing garage, my understanding is that was, the back area there was kind of a fill-in to take care of a problem, but I, again, removing that I think is the correct thing to do, to try to put it in that condition, and certainly to not, the way the building was actually set up is to also to pull that forward, and so that it's in alignment, so that the legal, what's the term I want to use, the legal non-conforming isn't increased, so everything is kind of still within that. More of the, more of the things on economics that are thrown in there, I, having sat on the planning commission and the Board of Adjustments, I rarely see an economic use, even when it's in collaboration with something. I understand that it is very, very onerous to try to do any of the things that try to meet that code. The other thing that I would note is generally in these, this area, the lot sizes are somewhat smaller. The, this is a one-acre lot with much smaller lots in the area, certainly adds to that uniqueness, and a larger lot probably, maybe it's not quite spelled out, but I do know that if, if this was, let's say, in our rural residential area, there might have had some different things there, and I'll leave it to staff to, you know, settle the specifics there. But the three conditions, I think, spell out, I think, where I'm at with those things. So looking back to legal, does that answer your request?
Mayor and counsel, yes, thank you, that, that's helpful. And if I could also just ask Ms. Rogers to let us know that she's consenting on behalf of her client to the additional, to the action at the next meeting, which is actually a bit of an extension for the timing that we need.
Yes, absolutely. So this is the second time that the city attorney has asked me for this, my apologies. We fully consent to waiving the 120-day deadline so that we can work with staff to develop this resolution, to outline the plans, to get plan sets to you that are consistent with the, with the council's expectations.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I will move the motion to continue the hearing of the appeal to the council of the Board of Appeals and Adjustments, denial of the variance request by Keith Mokun, Keith Mokun, in order to draft a finding for the variance. Does that work?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Wiesensel, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Ruski?
Aye.
Limple?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye. And so that motion will continue the hearing and bring it back. Motion approves for zero in recommending for the variance.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Excuse me, does that mean there's no public comment? Excuse me, I collect the court, my first time I've come to one of these.
Oh, let me see. This isn't technically a public.
Sounds like it's going well, but.
Wasn't technically a public hearing.
I have a legal, I just wanted to say a few things.
I'll defer to our legal. My understanding is not a public hearing that was held at the Board of Adjustments.
I'm responding to the letter.
Okay, what letter?
The notice.
Okay.
So Mayor, I think you answered it correctly, right? That it's not a public hearing, it was a chance to hear from the applicant, it's certainly in your purview running the meeting if you'd like to hear from, from a resident, but it's not a necessary time to.
Well, I mean, we sent out a notice.
So with that.
Correction, I think staff did publish this and send out notices to.
All right, so I'm going to reopen. Well, the hearing is continued, but I'll reopen the comment period for this time. Certainly, you've been very patient sitting through everything, but so if you have some, yeah, so if you have something to say, please step forward.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is my first meeting that I've come, so excuse if I'm not complete on all of the proper procedures. So my name is Brandon Vickers. I reside, as of this weekend, eight years, at 409 143rd Street. So that makes me, no, they're not up there.
East, west, north, south?
I am, in the drawing on the lot, I am the neighbor two. So the house in the back, that's me.
Okay, yeah.
So in where you see the driveway easement and where the property line is, that's my driveway.
Okay.
So I'm, if anyone's got an objection to this, that would be me, and I am completely supportive of this. I just wanted to point out, point out a couple of things that hasn't been mentioned. So as it was mentioned, this is Hawkins addition area, this was the farmhouse for all of the land that was around there. So when, when this property was bought and the two houses were built, the way it got positioned is that I'm in this back of the slot, I have Mr. Mokun's house to my west directly, but I'm actually behind his house a little bit, quite a bit, actually, and I'm also behind the house in front of me. So any vehicles going up his driveway are going in my driveway, going into his. So anything that's going to drive tons of construction trucks hauling out 15, 20, whatever, you know, hauling in dirt, fill, that sort of thing, I kind of object to. I don't have problems with the construction traffic that he would need to do this. Also, I'm in support of this because my kitchen window faces his backyard. When I drive in my house, I see the front yard, so I have, you know, the most view of this house. I feel that granting the variance to make it more seamless to his existing structure and not trying to shoehorn in something off the side of the house, let's say the tree wasn't a problem and they built there, now I'm looking at the back of his shed, or back of his garage, that sort of thing. And for him to, and I'm probably the only one that will, can really see this building when it's built, and where the carport is, that's a temporary structure, is going to be replaced, it will look better from my standpoint. So I just wanted to share my viewpoint as the direct neighbor, that some things that weren't necessarily considered in this, that if we, if the variance isn't granted, it may be a little bit of a detriment to me.
Thank you.
That's all I really wanted to say. Is that?
Thank you.
Okay. And welcome. Thank you.
Maybe you'll come back for more meetings.
Yeah, I will. I need you.
All right, so with that, action taken, the hearings continue, we've received no more comments, and that'll complete item 9A then. Move on to 10 city staff updates.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Just one item that's not Leprechaun Days related, but that is happening between now and your next council meeting, and I wanted to give an extra plug to the pep fest we're having for Peyton Honor-Dahl. And so it's really coming together nicely. Folks that know Peyton is, again, representing Minnesota, USA, Rosemount in, in the Olympics, in the shop, and so Carol Evan reached out to do a Carol Evan Sunrise set here in Rosemount on August 1st. So Carol Evan Sunrise, a morning news broadcast, means it's early, so Councilman Tyson, best of luck with that, right? You throw that back at us. No, 5:00 AM, 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM on August 1st, we'd love the community to show up, we're going to have police, fire, some music, free food, food truck, coffee truck, we're just trying to show that, that Rosemount is pumped for Peyton. So if folks can come out bright and early on August 1st, we'd love to see them. So that's all I had, Mayor.
All righty.
And where is that again?
Thank you, down in Central Park. Yeah, down in Central Park.
5:00 AM.
Yeah, 5:00 AM. That'll be good.
They did a double take, too. Yeah, I think it's great.
Please, 10A, we'll move to 10B, upcoming community calendar. First, any comments from council members?
No, I'll just put in, I know we've talked a lot about Leprechaun Days, but all the information is at leprechundays.org. We are partnering with MVTA again this year, which is fantastic, for Friday and Saturday of Midsummer Fair. We are changing the parking, however, so people can park down at the high school, and there'll be a shuttle bus that takes them around, so more information on the website. And then just follow us on our social media channels for any weather-related cancellations that may occur. You never know, there's been a lot of rain.
And I, I'll just add, because I know Heidi's so involved in it, but there's a lot of still opportunities for the youth volunteer National Honor Society, whatever it might be, that need volunteer hours, there's plenty of opportunities to reach out at that same website, to look at helping out and just doing small shifts that can go towards your National Honor Society credits.
All right, we'll go through upcoming this week, starting just a few days earlier, but July 18th, our Youth Commission Summer Splash Pad Event is being held in Central Park, X Splash Pad from 11 to 12. And then on that, I believe is Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday, then we start off with all our activities. Special note here, again, calling out the Rosemount Fire Department's waffle and sausage breakfast from 7:00 to 11:00 at Fire Station Number One. The, the new event here, the rib competition, July 20th, Saturday at 1:30 to 4:00, so 1:30 the judging starts, and on or before that, up to like 4:00, the ribs will be sold, people will be able to vote for people's choice, and we will have awards. So I'm thinking that's all like 3:30 to 4:00. Yeah. On July 22nd, on Monday, June, Joint City Council and Park Recreation Commission meeting here at 7:00 to 8:00. We'll have a planning commission member here July 23rd. On Tuesday nights, 6:30 to 7:30. The Leprechaun Days Midsummer Fair starts on Thursday, July 25th through the 27th at Central Park, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM each daily. And let's see, we got some more stuff here. And the next city council meeting work session is on Monday, the August 5th, from 5:00 to 6:00, followed by city council meeting August 5th, 7:00 to 8:00. And the reason for that change is on August 6th, is our Night to Unite, so we are taking reservations, I guess, for night party, neighborhood parties, that's in process. They can find that information on the website.
Yep, sign up online for a party.
Sign up for that. City Council, Public Works, Fire Department, and the Police Department, along with staff, will be running around to the neighborhoods. I know we have a lot of them over the past few years, so we're looking forward to that. And I believe that covers everything, so anything else coming before counsel? Seeing none, I'll move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.